Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, Mrs. Burns, please.
Mr. Congdon?
Here.
Ms. Boyle?
I'm here.
Mr. Burnett is absent. Mr. Feathers absent. Mrs. Hohmback?
Present.
Mr. Morris?
Present.
Mr. Parentana?
Here.
Mr. Rudy?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Quorum is present.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Prior to this meeting, we had an executive session to discuss potential and/or current litigation. Any announcements, Mrs. Burns?
No announcements.
Superintendent's report, Mr. Jones, please.
Pledge of allegiance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Look at that. Forgot to... Everyone, could we please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, and I'd like to make a statement to say that it had nothing to do with what the NFL does. I apologize. Superintendent's report, Mr. Jones, please.
Good evening, everyone. At our work sessions each month, I like to spotlight the fact that we have artwork that changes here. This is a rotating gallery of sorts, and so for this month, we have the town students at Pequeston who are being spotlighted for the month of November. Amazing works of self-portraits, graphic designs, watercolors, and 3D objects. Thanks to their art teachers, Heidi Goodheart Roof and Katie Stork for providing the artworks and inspiring creativity in our students. I will highlight, it's on our agenda, but we do have a draft copy of the school calendar for the 1819 school year, and then ultimately, if approved at our next meeting, that'll be able to go out publicly to people so that give you advanced notice with respect to planning for the 1819 school year. We have a couple of items that were in my superintendent's report for seniors in our community, senior citizens. Here at Maple Point, the fifth grade students last year started an activity where they invited senior citizens into the school for a holiday senior soiree. That is scheduled again for December. If you're interested, you can contact the Maple Point main office. They're asking for you to get to them this week so that they can kind of plan in advance, but that was a fun event, a good event, and it's a nice opportunity for our kids to interact with our seniors. Also, in the superintendent's report is a note about the senior citizens' tax assistance program. That's allowing for certain of our residents who reach age 65 by December 31st of 2017 to have a reduction in their taxes, and that's forms that will be sent out to those who participate. That'll be our effort, but you also will be able to request those forms, especially if you're new to the program. Information is in my report with respect to that. Have some school announcements. We want to congratulate those who were inducted into the Honor Society earlier this fall at the high school. That's a multi-pronged effort on the part of our students, not just scholarship, but service, leadership. It's an important endeavor for our kids to be able to be well-rounded like that, and we praise those who were inducted. Their names are attached to a link there as well. Elementary schools were active, middle schools were active, a variety of items are in my report, but I do want to spotlight the one where our high school kids, high school senior science club visited the Pequeston, or I'm sorry, the Sandberg Middle School in October for some Halloween science experiments. It's nice to have our different schools interact with each other, and that was one example of many where we do that. We were counting pumpkin seeds, we were collecting Halloween candy and other projects. We had our students at Sandberg involved with a suicide prevention program. There were a lot of valuable activities that take place, but one that also I think is worth spotlighting here in this public forum is that we'd like to thank the librarians from Lower Southampton Township, Bucks County Free Library, Levittown Branch, as well as the Langhorn Branch for visiting our high school and working with our ninth grade students and reminding them that libraries do exist still out in the public, and all that is available for them, not just in the printed books, but also digital books, museum passes, and opportunities to do homework and research projects there at those libraries as well. So, thank them for, we thank them for coming to our schools. And then finally, I know Mr. Parentana is going to touch on this later, but we've been talking a lot about the school code, the school budget, the school budget finally, I'm sorry, the state budget was finally resolved in Harrisburg, and the school code was also passed. That was the final piece of that in terms of all the funding aspects to this current school year. So, that at least puts us on square footing, and I'm sure Mr. Parentana will fill in some of the gaps there for us as well. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Presentations. Are we up to my presentation?
Yeah. Additional reports or presentations?
Presentations. We have two presentations this evening, and our first is actually going to be an athletic recognition, and I think we're going to be able to start this first with video, and then we're going to call up coach and the student who's being spotlighted. So, we're going to start with a video, and this will give you a clear picture of what we're celebrating. This is a state championship, and this video is a compilation of video from the day, and Coach White was the crafter. Rusty is leading the pack there, red shorts, white shirt, from Star for Fish. These are the best in the state. This is a three-point one. Most of us get the point guard, but we didn't care for the first one.
Come on, Evan! Come on, Evan!
Top ten, Evan!
Come on, Evan!
Yeah, let's go!
Excellent job, Rudy! Excellent!
That's it, Evan! Come on, Evan! Evan, come on!
We're here at the PIAA State Championships with your boys' state champion in AAA, Rusty Cutic. I'm sure that feels pretty good to hear that.
It feels amazing. It's just, it's so special for me, for like the whole school and the team. And I have a great group of people here who come out to support me. That means a huge amount. And then to stay title, that's huge. That's like the goal.
Yes.
For a really long time now.
All right, so let's go through the race. You know, big pack, pretty much through, it looked like about, pretty much the midway point. You gained some separation right after the two mile. Take us through it.
Yeah, it was very close after the first mile and a half or so. And then from two miles on, I made a pretty hard move, and Noah kind of went with me, but I'm not sure how far back he was. And from there, it was all about staying relaxed, but keep pushing that pace and don't let him catch up. That's just the goal, hold off to the end, finish.
Yeah, you made that move, opened up a little separation on beverage. Were you feeling good at that point? Were you feeling like you had it in you?
I was tired, but a state title's on the line, so that's really some pretty good motivation to keep going.
Yeah.
I kind of just pushed through it. I was not, I felt okay, but I felt better two miles ago, two miles in the race before.
And you raced a lot of guys, most of the guys in this field, whether it's Foundation, Manhattan, you know, all these big races that you went to, but you hadn't really seen beverage this year, and you guys were kind of one-two all season. So, what was your expectation, you know, against facing him head-to-head?
I really had no idea how he was going to run or what kind of strategy he had, and that's something that is a bit tough because I'm not sure if he was going to sit, kick kind of guy, or someone takes stuff from a gun.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I kind of just had to go with my own strategy and hope that I could break him, and that would not work to his advantage.
And I was talking to your coach, first Nishamani state champion in cross-country in school history. How good does that sound?
Wonderful. Once again, I have a lot of school spirit, a lot of pride in wearing the Nishamani colors, so it's a wonderful thing to have a state title, but also for the people with me. Because I'm going to run, but it was a team effort, I would say, because there was our support every day of practice, every race. A lot of them came out and drove two and a half plus hours to see me race for 15 minutes. There was a girl from the Nishamani also running, and like, kind of helped each other out all throughout the weekend and things like that. So, it's a great, it brings a great pleasure to me, but also the team. It's a wonderful thing that I was able to win one from the Nishamani.
When did you know you had it?
To be honest, I didn't really think, there was never a time in the race I knew I had it. Probably the last 50 meters, I had a feeling, because I didn't hear people behind me screaming.
Yeah.
But nothing's guaranteed, so I had to keep pushing through.
And you crossed the finish line, state champ. Describe the feeling of breaking that tape.
That's my favorite one yet. It's great. I can't explain it, just, I've seen it happen so many times to other people, but it's me, it's even more special this time.
And any postseason plans, Foot Locker?
The goal is Foot Locker.
Okay.
And so, the regional is in three weeks, I think.
Yeah. So, from a training perspective, how are you going to approach that?
I haven't really decided yet.
Going to soak up this win first?
Finish up this weekend, and then I'll decide what's going to happen after that.
All right. Rusty Cutic to the Nishamani, state champion in AAA. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Rusty's coach is Sid White. Mr. White? Well, for television. You press the button there too, Coach. Yep.
Thank you very much. Rusty, I've been working with Rusty for three and a half years now. When he started as a freshman, we didn't really get to do much in the summer because Rusty's a bit of a world traveler. First race, we entered him in, we put him in the novice race. He won that by two seconds over some guys who also took state medals in this last race, and I said to Rusty, "It's your last novice race, welcome to the varsity." And he's run varsity for us ever since. He quickly became our number three guy, learned to run with some excellent seniors we had that year, and I think he learned a lot about leadership from them, and since then, maybe even before they graduated, he became the leader of the team. And what we're hoping now is, from this, we'll have a lot of guys, a lot of girls, see what it takes, pick up the mantle of leadership when he graduates, and hopefully there are more great things to come. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
Congratulations.
Rusty, we have a certificate here for you, but really, we just wanted to bring you out this evening to publicly congratulate you. I know the school had him come the next day. The high school had Rusty report on fire truck. So, he was on the fire truck, strapped in. They had him coming around, and all of the fall sports athletes were there to greet him. It was really a nice morning. Cross-country is a solitary sport. It's pretty quiet. If you go to watch, if you travel two and a half hours to see that race, you see him at the beginning, and you might see him at the end, but you know, the race happens, and pretty much they're on their own, the athletes. And so, it was really nice that day to have the school community be able to congratulate him, and you saw how well he did on that video, right after that race, to be able to speak like that as well as he did, and to talk about those people who supported him, that it was more than just Rusty on the course as much as all the people behind him, supporting him, and how proud he is to be here at the Nishamani. We're really proud of him. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to take a picture here or there? Do you want to move in front of there? How about we do that?
I'll do that, put him out of there.
Thank you.
Parent, mom, and dad, come on, take a picture too. Come on. I was. Coach? Rusty has to escape because he's not just a runner, he's also a student. Rusty, you didn't tell us, we didn't even get a chance to say anything. Tell these people where you're headed off to school next year.
Georgetown?
Georgetown. He's going to be running for them. They're going to be paying a good bit of his way, I think, a little bit with the scholarship there, his running scholarship, we're hoping, right? And so, that's really, congratulations to you. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Okay. Mrs. Markowitz is going to introduce our next, and actually, this was our scheduled presentation. Rusty's a pleasant surprise. Mrs. Markowitz?
Thank you. Okay, I'm introducing Mike Lilis from RBC, the underwriter for bonds, and he's going to present one of our bonds. Our 2012 bond is up for potential refinancing, and we could be saving some money, so he will be explaining the bond issue, refinancing.
Good evening, everybody. I'm just going to make sure. Oh, okay. As you may know, we met with the Business Operations Committee not too long ago. We had scheduled to meet with them because part of our job, and by the way, let me stop for a second. Who would normally be here tonight representing your independent financial advisor, PFM, is Zach Williard. He had a prior commitment, so I'm here trying to fill in for both of us, and also with us is the district's bond counsel, Mark Stein, from Eckerd Siemens. So, with that, so I was starting to say that we met with the Business Operations Committee not too long ago to present the idea of doing this potential refinancing, and at the end of the meeting, they thought it made sense to come here tonight to tell you about it and ask you, you know, to consider moving forward with it after tonight. So, with that, I'm going to work through this handout that will be on the screen, and each of you should have a hard copy. So, does this, am I not doing something? I'm bad luck with this stuff. I have to hit those. Okay. So, the first page, we always like to show you an up-to-date chart on where interest rates are, and this chart is showing a tax exempt index. It's a 10-year tax exempt index, and we're plotting its movement over the last 20 years, since 1997. And a couple of key things that you can take away from this is that you can see gradually rates have been decreasing over the last 20 years, and that red line represents where this index is right now. It's at 1.91%, and you can see it's right at the level where the lowest part of the rates on this decline. It's right in the kind of the middle of that, and one other thing I would mention is that you can see there's the lowest point below that red line where that index was at 1.29%. That was in mid-June of 2016. That's the lowest point rates have been in over 40 years. So, right now, this index is about three-quarters of a point above the lowest point in over 40 years. So, it's a good time to consider financing or refinancing. The next page, probably you may have seen this kind of schedule before from us. This is just showing all the district's outstanding debt service for each issue on a fiscal year basis, and you can see we highlighted the 2012 bonds because those are the bonds that we're going to ask you to consider refinancing. At the very bottom there, you can see we've got a little, we've highlighted a little box there, a date that's April 15th of 2018. That's the call date of these bonds. You are legally, the district has not been able to legally refinance this issue until we get within 90 days of this call date, which is the reason that we're coming to you now, because we had to wait until we got close enough to this call date to present you with this opportunity. So, essentially, the earliest time that you could close on a refinancing of this issue is January 15th of 2018. The next page is the same schedule, except that we've netted out state reimbursement. So, if, let's go to the next page. And here, we're showing you what the outstanding debt service looks like on the 2012 bonds. There's a little less than seven years till the final maturity, which is April 15th of 2024, and you can see the second column from the right says principal. That shows all the annual principal payments, and then just to the right of that where it says coupon, that shows you the interest rate that applies to each of the maturities, and you can see the interest rates gradually increase over time, which is normal, and they range from 1 and 1/4% to 3%. And if you were to blend all those rates, the average rate on this issue is 2.66%. So, you know, those of you who are familiar with mortgages, it'd be like looking to refinance a mortgage with a rate of 2.66%. Okay, this is the key page in this presentation, and here we're going to show you what we're estimating the refinancing would look like, and you know, most importantly, the savings based on where rates are right now. So, with that, I'm going to point your attention to the scheduled on the right side. It says debt service savings. And then below that, you see we have the fiscal year, each fiscal year, from the current year all the way to the final fiscal year 2024 when the bonds mature. The next column, that's, you're recalling it, the prior debt service. That's the debt service on a fiscal basis for the 2012 bonds. The next column, the refunding debt service, that's what we're estimating would be, the refinancing debt service based on, you know, rates that we're estimating right now. And then the most important column is the savings in that last column, and the way we've structured it for you tonight is we're showing that the district would realize all the savings in this current fiscal year, and then thereafter, you can see it's, you know, this 3,400 one year, 7,700 next year, then minus 3,000. It's basically structured so it's break-even from thereafter, or pretty close to that. And so, the total savings would be 257,000, and as a percentage of the bonds that he would be refinancing, it's 2.7, almost 2.8%. On the left side, I'll point out a couple of things to you. Oh, one I didn't mention is that we assumed a closing date on exactly the earliest day you could settle on this, which is January 15th. In that summary there on the left, it's highlighted, yeah, it's highlighted summary. If you just go down to a line item that says bond yield, and you across from that, that's a 1.60%. That's what we're estimating the rate to be on the issue as of today, and if you compare that to the rate on the existing bonds, 2.66%, you're saving a little over a point in interest. Now, one thing I would mention to the folks who are here on the operations committee, the savings were about $40,000 better when we met with them. Since then, the rates have gone up a little bit, so if you're wondering why the difference, that's the difference. And, you know, rates fluctuate day-to-day, so it's the kind of thing that, you know, we just see how things go going forward. The other thing I want to point out to you in this page, below the summary, highlighted term, it says their sources and use of funds. You can see below that, it says bond paramount. That's what we're estimating the size of the bond issue to be, 9.9 million 310,000. And then down below is what we're using the proceeds of the bonds for, which the largest cost item, as you might suspect, is the amount we need to pay off the 2012 bonds, and that's the estimated refunding escrow deposit of 9 million 143,000. Then, below that, there's two categories of costs. There's the underwriter discount, that's our fee, and then the estimated cost of issuance. That includes the fee for your legal fees, for PFM, for printing all the documents, having a paying agent bank, and some miscellaneous things. And right now, those are, I think they're conservatively estimated. We haven't, right now, because it's very preliminary, we haven't like fine-tuned that at all, but if you should go forward, we'll have that cost itemized for you going forward. Yes? Sure.
The savings is net of any issuance costs, correct?
Exactly.
And we're not increasing the term in any way?
No, in fact, thank you for reminding me. We've actually shortened the term six months on this issue. We're having the final maturity moved up from March 15th of 2024 to October 15th of 2023. It's in the same fiscal year, but we're doing a shortening the issue by six months, which is realizing additional savings for the school district. Thank you for, I almost missed mentioning that. It's an important point. And one other thing I'll point out, the bottom there on the left, where you see sensitivity analysis, it says value of a tenth of a percent of net savings. What that means is, this is showing us how much the savings would vary with a change in interest rates of a tenth of a point. So, if rates were to go down a tenth of a point, your savings would go up a little more than $33,000. So, it just gives you an idea of the sensitivity of rates to the savings.
Mike, could you estimate at what interest level, if the rates would tend to rise rather than stay stable, would we consider backing out of this?
That's actually a key question here that, actually, we're going to talk about that in a second, because that relates to the parameters resolution where we have to actually determine that. So, let's go to the next page. So, we put together an estimated timetable here for you, and let me just quickly run through it. So, we're showing the meeting on the 14th we have with the Business Operations Committee, then November 14th, you know, our meeting tonight, and if you should decide that you want to proceed with this refinancing, what we'd propose is that on your November 28th meeting, that the board consider adopting a parameters resolution, and that's a resolution that the board has used in the past, I think with great success on all its refinancings, and basically what that does is it authorizes, once you, if you prove it, it authorizes the financing team to go out and sell bonds at any time, provided we're able to provide savings to the district that are worthwhile, and they would have to be above a minimum level of savings, which Mr. Parentana was just referring to in a minute. And that's, that actually becomes, you know, probably the most important decision you would have to make on this parameters resolution. And I guess while we're on it, when we were talking about this with the Business Operations Committee, we, you know, we discussed what might be an absolute minimum level, and their agreement was 150,000 would be the least amount that would be worthwhile to go forward with this refinancing. with this refinancing. Now, that doesn't mean that that's what you're, the savings you're going to get, because, you know, right now, you see, you have over $250,000 worth of savings. We obviously want to get savings that are that level and close to that level, and maybe even higher if we can. I mean, so, we just have that minimum. So, if for some reason, interest rates should start going up, and we think the market's getting away from us, and we don't think rates are going to come back down again, it's important to know what would be the least amount of savings you'd be willing to take, yeah, going forward. We would need to know that in advance. And I would also, I think it's important to mention that when we decide to go out in the market for the refinancing, we're not going to do so until we speak to Barbara, and then she speaks to whoever else that may be necessary, so that you feel comfortable that we go out in the market at that time. So, this is not an automatic thing. You know, it's not carte blanche. We're going to stay in contact with Barbara, just to make sure that when we, if you do want to move forward of this, that we do go out in the market, that we'll do so to get savings that are worthwhile to you.
So, what would the drop dead date be then, Mr. Lilies?
Well, right now, the earliest we could go out in the market, if you see the December fourteenth on this time schedule, on this timetable, rather, that would be the earliest right now we're estimating when we could go out in the market. And we've tentatively reserved that date in our schedule, provided that, you know, we think on that particular day, the market is favorable enough that we would go through with this. If it isn't, what we'll do is, we may, we may wait. I mean, you don't have to do it then. This would be the earliest you could do it. And this, you know, resolution gives the ability to do that. It gives us that flexibility. Well, no, I mean, this is, this is open-ended. And maybe, you know, Mark, if you want to, I don't know if there's any what we call sunset on this sort of thing, but it can be left, left open. Go ahead, Mark, if you wanted to.
There is no sunset on this. This will just stay there if it doesn't get done. Can you hear me? I'm sorry. If it doesn't, if the bond sale doesn't happen because interest rates get away, get away from, get away from, get away from us, then it can just sit there. Eventually, we would, down the road, I have never had to do this, we would, there's filings you can make to get it taken off your book, so that it just never happened. Okay?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mark. So, if we were to go out in the market on the fourteenth of December, we're showing, you know, we would settle on January fifteenth, which, as I mentioned, is the earliest you could settle on this. The next page, page seven, I'm not going to really review this. This is more sort of for your reference. It just, again, mentioned some things about the features and benefits of a parameters resolution. One thing that I would highlight there is, on that third bullet point, you see, kind of in the second line, we're mentioning that one of the features of a parameters resolution is, you have to state a maximum amount, just to satisfy state requirements. And so, after consulting with, with Zach Williard and Mark, we've chose the amount of 11 million. Now, you, a little while ago, I showed you that the bond issue's only going to be nine million and change. But you may recall that we usually set the maximum amount high enough, so we don't have any danger of violating the parameters. And I'll kind of maybe reiterate that point or drive it home. I'm going to turn to the next page. Or actually, let's flip two pages. Go to page nine. This is what we're estimating the debt service schedule would look like. You can see the, the principal column, all the principal maturities add up to the 9 million, 310,000, I showed you a little while ago. Now, when we size the maximum debt service schedule, the reason, what we're doing is, we're increasing the amount in each of those maturities, because as interest rates change, those principal amounts will fluctuate. And when, if you, when we go out, if we go out and sell the bonds, if any one maturity were to go above the maximum, then we couldn't close on the issue. So, what we do is, we figure out, we put an extra amount of principal in each year that we don't think we would need to go above. And then, when you add all those up, you get your total maximum amount of 11, 11 million, which, if you go to the previous page, on page eight, again, that principal column, you'll, in each of those years, if you were to compare them to the estimated principal amount, you'll see that there's a few hundred thousand dollars of cushion, of extra principal in each year, just to make sure that we don't ever go above those individual amounts.
The rates there, 5.5?
Oh, good question. We have to, one of the other requirements is, of the state law, is that we have to, when we have a maximum parameter schedule like this, we have to state a maximum interest rate. So, we picked it at 5.5 percent. In a way, it's kind of silly, because if forever, to go to 5.5 percent, this refinance wouldn't work. But again, we do it to satisfy, you know, legal requirements.
Mr. Lilies, isn't this the same strategy we used with the high school bonds we refinanced a few years ago?
Yeah, you mean the parameters resolution?
Yeah.
Exactly. And in fact, on page seven, which I didn't go over in any, I only went over that one bullet point, that last bullet point, I mentioned there that on the four refinancings the district has done, the 2012 issue, the 2013, 2015 C, which I think you may be referring to, Steve, and the 2016 bonds, we use the parameters resolution for all those. And we saved about 7.6 million. So, it, it worked pretty well then. And we think, you know, that's the way to go now. Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to kind of put a synopsis on this. So, if we look at it in a way that we're refinancing, we're looking at shortening the length of term of this bond by six months, with having savings somewhere in the $250,000 range at this point in time. I kind of know the answer. But what risk is the school district taking by doing this?
I suppose the only risk is, is that if you, if you say, we went forward and sold, you know, the bonds on the fourteenth of December, and then interest rates wouldn't even lower later, you, you know, you would have had better savings if you waited. That's, I mean, I see that as kind of the main risk.
But there isn't any risk.
They could go higher, though, too. So, that's the other thing.
Right. And if they go higher, and we decide that we don't want to go forward with this, we just end the process, and there's no risk to the district in losing anything?
I think the only, I guess, if, I wouldn't know if I'd call it risk, but you would have incurred some costs, I guess, like the advertising cost.
Right.
And then, and then there's the rating fee. It, you know, we, we just started the rating process, but we haven't gotten very far in it. So, once we get past a certain point, though, you would incur some cost to them. But I guess that would be the only, you know, cost it risks, so to speak.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Steve, your lights on.
I just want to verify that all those costs are already factored in.
Yes.
To the savings. So, basically, there's no risk. If we don't do it, we don't lose anything. And we could save six months and up to 250,000 dollars.
Yeah, yeah. No, thank you for mentioning that point. It's net of all costs. Okay. So, I guess, you know, if you'd like to proceed, I guess, we would come here on the twenty-eighth. And I think Mark would prepare a parameters resolution for you to consider. And then, if you approved it, then we'd be ready to go.
On the twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Mark, anything else you want to add, or? Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, thanks, everybody.
All right. At this time, we're going to move to public comment. Mrs. Burns, no one signed up for public comment. Okay. All right. Items that are for approval at our meeting on the twenty-eighth will be the budget transfers, refunding of the Series 2012 bonds, which we just discussed, contract with Lakeside Transportation, contract for dental service, contract for council Southeast Pennsylvania, the eighteen-nineteen calendar, as Joe had mentioned earlier, Sunday facility usage and overnight trips. Does anybody have anything they'd like to ask about those items that we'll be voting on at our next meeting?
I just have one question about the contract for Lakeside. We're expanding our transportation services. And entering this contract, is that going to hinder our small vehicle deliveries?
No, this is a very specific, singular placement for some students. And the placement has transportation associated with it. It's the only, it's the only location that we do that with.
All right. We can move to committee reports. Business operations, Ms. Hollback, please.
The last business operations meeting was October 25th, where we discussed the bonds, where everybody just heard the presentation about. And the next meeting is Tuesday, January 16th, 6:30 here. And it'll be about the budget. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move to educational development, policy, and IU board. Ms. Boyle, please.
The, the next ed development meeting will be February 20th, in which we're going to discuss the new academic initiatives. And the next policy committee will be January 30th, 6:30 in the boardroom. We're going to proceed to discuss the 600 and 700 series of the PSBA guidelines. And the IU meeting is going to be November 21st. And that's going to be an open house at the Samuel Everett, you know, Early Education Center.
Thank you very much. Mr. Feather is not with us this evening. Did anybody have anything on the Neshamani Education Foundation?
Yes, I got a copy from.
Go ahead, Ron.
Okay, go ahead. Neshamani Education Foundation held their November meeting this past Monday at Maple Point. A number of items were discussed during the meeting, including the following. Current fundraisers include a Neshamani Education Foundation night at the Flyers on November 28th. Ticket sales are available for this event. Tickets for a raffle basket containing four tickets to a Flyers game on December 20th, along with the Flyers, with Flyers items, are available for sale at all school main offices until Friday, November 1st. Dining for Dollars event was held at Bertucci's on November 6th and 7th. Total amount raised has not been reported yet by the restaurant, but many Neshamani staff, community members attended both days. A series of holiday cards featuring artwork by Neshamani High School students will be available for sale in December in all schools. Proceeds from these cards will benefit the foundation. The board reviewed fourteen classroom grant applications at the meeting. Fourteen winners will be notified by the end of the month, end of the month, and will be available to purchase approved items immediately for use. Several alumni express interest in serving on the alumni committee starting, beginning of 2018. Anybody else interested is encouraged to join by contacting any foundation board member or visiting NEF website, www.neshamani.org/nef, and filling out the information form. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. PSBA liaison, Mr. Perantano, please.
Thank you, Mr. Condon. As Mr. Jones mentioned in his superintendent report, the budget has finally been settled. Guidance from the PSBA was being provided to districts during this time. Extensive changes were included in the budget. It included an omnibus school code provision under House Bill 178, that actually became law without the governor's signature. The governor decided not to veto it or sign it. So, it becomes law after a certain amount of time. And, and that's how that occurred. Some things that may be of key interest to the public is, there is a delay in the graduation requirements regarding the Keystone exams. I still don't know, Mr. Jones, did, did any talk about the graduation project? Is that still in, still out?
That's not, that's been out.
That's still out?
It's just the Keystone. It's now our sophomores, sophomores, current sophomores now.
Our current sophomores now?
Will be responsible.
Okay. So, they'll be done with that soon, which I think is good. I don't know how anybody else feels about that. Something for, we have three new school board members that will be joining us in December. There is now mandated training for school board directors, even though it doesn't take effect until the 2018, 2019 school year. I would hope, as many of us did when we came on, the PSBA offers these opportunities free of charge. And they're, and they give you a great foundation to start your, your service to your, your district. And I did it. I found it very informative. I hope everybody will take the opportunity to that. Economic furloughs, which can help us in times where we're struggling with our payroll and, and class sizes can be helpful. IU funding has been set at a flat level. So many, I mean, there was a lot in this. I sent it to all board members. There's now going to be a, starting in the eighteen-nineteen school year as well, a mandatory in-service and instructional training on opioid abuse. It's part of the school code now. It's going to be on behalf of the Department of Health and the Department of Education for all grades six through 12 will take place. Security drills, you know, again, today, I don't know if anybody caught the news today, there was another school incident out in California. You know, we do our best to provide for every situation, but be ever diligent, diligent, excuse me, to make sure that we have the security of our children and our staff members. So, we don't talk about publicly about what we do in security here at Neshamani, but we, we do make sure that everybody is prepared, as we can be, for the situations we think may come. Lucky for us, we're not doing any new building right now, because they put back in place the Plan Com moratorium for seventeen, eighteen school year. So, if there's, you had a project out there, you wouldn't be getting any state funding. And various other things for military service, charter schools, some charter school consolidation, and new requirements around the early, excuse me, Every Student Succeeds Act, that replaced the old No Child Left Behind Act. So, there's a lot of changes in here that our administration has to look at, give us guidance on, how they'll affect us in our, our duties as school board directors, as well as how they may impact, you know, the education of our children. So, like everything, I think there's some good in there. Of course, I think there's some bad in there. But I'm glad that we have an organization that keeps us abreast of these complex issues, and that we can relay them to not only our board members, but to the public. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Tech school, Mr. Rudy, please.
Okay, the tech board met Monday, October 23rd. Once again, the primary topic was a, for discussion, was a readjustment of the capital improvement bond issue, which we're looking into. Also, they're also looking at a reassessment of the student tuition payments was also brought up at that meeting. So, thereafter, there was decided that there needed to be a special meeting, which was had on November 6th, which this general, there was a general consensus made, and will probably be voted on our next meeting, Monday, November 27th, at 7:30 at the tech board. And then, sent to the sending units, school boards units, at that point. Basically, it's, they're getting away somewhat from this, basing the tuition on the school size and taxing parameters and so forth, and going with the number of students that we'll actually be sending, divided into our overall overhead costs. And I think it makes it easier for people like Barbara to make their decisions each year. So, that's one of the benefits. And either way, our costs will be less moving forward. That is my report. Any questions?
Ron, the, you know, a lot of this came about because of the bond refunding for an expected new project at the tech school.
Yes.
How does this impact that proposed bond?
Well, what do you mean, how did it impact it? Basically, there's, oh, well, it's, it's going to be readjusted. It was initially sent up, what's the authority actually, is under that bond issue. And what happens is, you're, it was, that, it's basically totally different there than a standard bond. I don't know how, you know, to explain it. Basically, it's based on the tax ratables from each district, has a large percentage and what, and they're doing away with that. And they're going to rate more on the actual number of students that are sent. Still going to have, that is still part, going to be part of the form. Still going to have be, that is still part, going to be part of the formula, but I, the, kind of a compromise was set to kind of cut that in half so that we're not paying, so that the smaller schools that don't have the, the tax base won't get hammered if we go to a straight, straight.
If you're one of the sending districts that may be behind on that two-year schedule, because the way it was always explained to me is, is you run in the rear, sometimes you're paying more.
It's every two years, and it's still going to be like one year in a row, I believe, right? It would still have to be, just to, you know, so, you know, you can pay it, you know. You don't know what, you don't know what, how many kids are actually going to be there back. So, it's basically still going to be one year behind. But it's just a different formula. You know, it's, they're basically reassessing the formula, you know, the, the funding measures for both the bond as well as the annual tuition. Anybody else?
And who's all involved with the reassessing of the actual formula?
Right now, the, the board itself is, we did have a special meeting last Monday and discussed that for about an hour and a half, and there was a consensus kind of come, came about. Again, it's, it's going to cost some of the smaller schools a little more. It will help the schools with the, you know, when it was based more on the tax bases, the Shamani and Pensbury were hit pretty hard. And that will, this reassessment will help us if, if it's approved.
Ron, it's going to be based now more upon cost per student and the number of sending students, correct?
Correct. It's like 21 million, and you divide it into the 1,500 students. It comes out to just under 15,000 per student, and that's the way they're going to go forward with that, instead of basing it on, you know, how much, how large your school was and your tax base.
Okay.
It was kind of very convoluted, kind of complicated formula before. This kind of simplifies it. Again, kind of hurts the smaller schools a little bit. It will help, you know, the larger schools like Shamani and Pensbury. No, I'm sorry.
Ultimately, all the school boards will vote on that.
Yes, that's correct.
That change goes back to each of the six school boards, so you'll get a detailed explanation from the tech school.
Yeah, there'll be a detail. This is just, this, they'll...
Just an update.
Right. This will probably approve, I'm going to surmise next, at the next meeting this month, the 27th, and then it'll be sent to the sending boards.
And does it have to be unanimous vote?
Yes, yes.
It has to be unanimous for all boards?
Yes.
So, if one school district doesn't want to do it, it puts the kibosh on everything.
Right. Pensbury was the initial, initiated the concern with the, the whole reassessment process because of the Articles of Agreement are, are basically being solved, you know. Next year, they're going to be paid off, so we had to start. This is basically a new contract, in essence.
The whole thing with the Article of Agreement there is, it's such a convoluted formula.
Yes, it was very convoluted.
And you're paying for it two years, and it's hard to, you know, get that money paid by the district in the sense of having a reasonable budget and a flexibility as a school district.
Yeah, it, it'll be a much more streamlined process and easier for our, for accounting.
Right.
Moving forward.
So, you're not feeling that hit two years down the line, so, you know, you're using.
Yeah, it's much to be one year. It's, it'll be a little closer.
But when that moves out of committee, obviously, there's going to be public discussion at the tech school, and they, they want to be able to bring the building up to a little better repair. Roof, the roof has to be replaced, some air conditioning and things like that.
27.5.
So, what we're doing there will be actually maintaining the building and fixing the formula all pretty much at once.
Yes, it'll be, correct.
The scary thing about it is one school district or actually one board director votes no on it.
Yes, that's true.
And then, you know, there, we're back to the old formula, the old way of doing things, and then the formula itself.
They'd have to vote to continue those.
Correct.
So, in essence, it's done at the end of, I think, this year, isn't it, Barbara, the end of? I thought, yeah, so we have to, would have to, you know, and do something new or just continue on with the old parameters.
Right.
But, yeah, it's going to be a new, basically, they're going to remodel a lot of areas that need a lot of updating, like the welding area, which is way behind. They're going to add a gymnasium, which they don't really have at this point. Only about 20% of the building has AC. They're going to make that 100%. So, there will be a lot of other areas that are going to be updated that need it, that haven't been done. So, in like 20 years, so I think it's a worthwhile project, so.
All right. This time, we're going to move to our second public comment. We're limited to three minutes. Please state your name, area, reside, your profession, and please no personal attacks. You can approach the podium.
Good evening. My name's Scott Heaney. I work in the transportation department. I'm Vice President in the Shamani's Educational and Support Professional Association. And Neshpa would like to be the first to congratulate the girls' soccer team on their two-to-one victory this evening and advancing to the championship game in Hershey. Thank you.
I'd like to be the first to announce the game time. Thank you, Mr. Solomon. That was good. Skins won. Title game Friday, 4:00 PM in Hershey. Friday, 4:00 PM, this Friday, 4:00 PM in Hershey.
They don't get out of school until 3:15 or 2:15. That's going to be a tough trip.
Transportation Department will take care of that.
We'll, we'll get out the helicopter. It will be on TV? PCN, awesome. So, Friday, 4:00 PM, tune in to PCN if you can't make it up to Hershey. And if you do, bring back some chocolate bars. All right. Any more public comment? No. All right. We're going to move to future topics. I'm going to bring one up with, with what's going on. We have a few areas that we're looking to save money in. Obviously, our biggest concern as a board is our budget. We've discussed this out of committee in one of our committees, our finance committee, the business committee. And I'd like to, you know, direct our administration, moving forward, to look into going out for quote or bid or proposal on items such as our health and scripts, which is right now through the consortium, and some ancillary insurances as well. So, I'd like to have the administration come up with a few of those items that we can possibly vote on at our next meeting for going out for RFP. I think it's not really going to cost us much, but a little bit of hard work to get these numbers in to our future board's hands to see where we're going with the consortium versus other areas of health insurance. And as we mentioned, as well as ancillary insurances. So, hopefully, we can have something on the agenda for the 28th to vote on. Does anybody else have any future topics? No? All right. Be there none. We're going to move to board comment.
I forgot all about that.
Well, we have one.
Yeah, I'm in a daze over here. Excuse me. I, I had a short conversation with, with Tina today and also Mrs. Boyle. And, you know, this year is moving fastly forward, and, you know, we all remember that person sitting between me and Marty is no longer with us anymore. Mr. Sanna, you know, served this district, I think, with distinction and courage, being almost the majority of the time that he was serving. You know, he was ill. He kept it to himself. He really didn't, you know, reflect upon it to any of us to let us know what was going on. And made it almost every meeting, every committee meeting. He really served, you know, this district well. And I think as a board, since this board is going to drastically change in, in another meeting, it'd be proper to this board to maybe give the administration direction that we establish some type of memorial recognizing Mr. Sanna's service. I know his home school was Miller Elementary. I think maybe it'd be appropriate to maybe have a, I don't know what they do there, but I'm just thinking maybe a plaque, maybe something at the library or something like that. Just, you know, recognizing that there is a person that cared enough to get involved and did right by his school district, and I, and I think he deserves it. So, if there's, you know, a board consensus to direct the administration to do that, I think it's, it's, it's well required. And I would, I would seek that the administration, if so, would, would reach out to the family first to make sure it's something they would accept. I don't want to do anything that, you know, that they, they wouldn't want to do. So, I want to thank Mrs. Hollenbeck there for waking me up and, and reminding me to bring this subject matter up. So, unless there's any objections, Mr. Condon, can we direct the administration that way?
I have no, no objection at all. You know, Rob is surely missed. He was, he was a very good man. I'm 100% behind you with that. If anybody else has any comment, you know, feel free.
I think he was very deserved of it. He put the kids before anything, and I just, I think his family would be very honored by it.
Absolutely, yeah. So, if we can maybe make contact and we'll have something to, you know, present, not physically, but on the 28th. Okay, good. Any other future topics? Okay, be there none. We're going to move to board comment. Any board comment?
I'd just like to congratulate Rusty on his championship then. And I was more impressed with how he spoke about his teammates, about how they collaborated together, how they worked together, how he talked about his pride in the school. I mean, that, that goes to show you the type of caliper of, of, of kids and families that are here in, in the Shamani. I think he presented himself with distinction as well as excellence in, in his, in his athletics and very, very well-deserving to a nice young man. And I know the family as well, and they're a very, very good family. You know, we were talking about, Mr. Jones brought it up, and I don't know if the, the public could hear. He was asking, you know, Rusty, you know, where he's going to go for college, and, you know, that he might get some assistance. And, you know, with the college costs today, that's so prominent in every family's decision-making. And there's lots of help out there. And I'd had a conversation with Mr. Jones previously and with Mr. Stanley. And last year, Mr. Stanley did a, I can't remember if it was in newsletter or on the website, where he posted all the scholarships that are available through Shamani that are being sponsored by people associated with Shamani. There's quite many of them. So, I hope again this year that you can maybe do something in the newsletter and at least denote, you know, all the different scholarships that are available and hail, you know, each family can, can apply for them. And then they can contact, you know, the high school and see what the parameters are to qualify for those individual scholarships. So, I think that's a great, a great thing, and Shamani, the community, you know, really have a, have a love and care for their, their students, and they, they provide, you know, a lot of generous offerings. Nobody's going to get a full boat, but every little bit helps. And so, I hope people will take advantage of that and, and popularize it so that, you know, people that want to contribute and can help keep these scholarships going. So, thank you. That's all, that's all I have.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else?
Just to back up with your, you were saying about Rusty. Basically, as an old cross-country runner myself, I understand the achievement that it's just amazing.
Ron, you're not that old.
Yeah, well, I, yes, I am getting there. 74. Cross-country is really tough. I mean, it's, you know, you know, Shamani's had a lot of great state champions. You know, we've had teams, we've had individuals. It's, you know, been very blessed in that way. However, Rusty's achievement is the fact that he's had so many participants that he, that he beat. I mean, there's thousands of kids that go out for cross-country, you know. It's not, you're not, it's not a team. It's not a, this is an individual event, which probably, probably up to seven or eight thousand kids probably competed, boys competed, and he beat them all. It's just pretty amazing. It's not a weight class. It's not a, a single, you know, you know, a single event like track and field or, or even a team event. It's a single one event, and it's just pretty amazing that he beat everyone in the state, or 500-some teams. Just want to put that out there and congratulate him. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to continue on with your words there as well, Rusty. I think the most amazing thing is that right after he crossed the finish line, he held a 10-minute interview and was able to speak. First of all, it would take me about six or seven times as long for me to get 3.1 miles in, and it would probably take me about three or four days before I'd be able to talk again. So, I mean, to see him right come across that finish line, that was, that was awesome to see that. Congratulations once again, Rusty, on your accomplishments. You're making the Shamani proud. With that being said, one more? Please, Steve, please.
I'm sorry, but this is a, you know, talking about Rusty there and scholarships and people giving, you know, just made me remember, you know, it's, it's been a, an overwhelming experience with my family's been through the last year. And I just can't say enough about the Shamani community and the, the people in my own home district of Lower South. The support and the willingness to reach out and help has just been overwhelming and incredible. And in my son's memory, we will be also giving back to Shamani kids and helping them get along. And the overwhelming support from the people that know us, our friends and family, have allowed us to do this. And on behalf of my wife and my daughter, I just want to make sure you all know that it's appreciated, and we thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second, please? Mr. Solomon, thank you for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, and good night.